Hello, we're back for another study session. Let's begin Hanson, okay? I mean, I can hear him, but I don't know if he can hear me. Test. The C I R T. Uh, thank you Hanson. The C I R T should includes members of senior management. Hello?
You don't hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me? Can you hear me? I'm going to assume you can hear me. The trust service. Hello? Let me reconnect. Hello, can you hear me now? Hello? I guess not. No, it's not that. No, it's, it's him. Not me. Hmm? Yeah, does many times. Okay, can we actually begin? Hold on. Hello? This is so weird. Yeah, I'll just start. If this gets fixed, hopefully. You'll be able to hear him. Trust principles confidentiality focuses on. Um. The trust service principle focuses on protection of sensitive corporate data from unauthorized disclosure. Which activity are accountants more likely to participate in? Detection? Actually no, continuous monitoring. We, he can't hear me at all. Um. Disconnect and reconnect. The. Telling him to disconnect and reconnect right now. No, I'm not muted, this is not a light, first of all, this is just how it is, this is sticker. This is minus, this is plus. Can you hear me now? I don't know, no. Here, and there's no buttons. I can hear myself, yes. Okay, provides the opportunity to enhance physical access controls by. What? This is weird, why can't he hear me? What about now, can you hear me now? No, he can't. Things, I can't hear him either. Oh, now I can hear him. So I can hear him, but he can't hear me, why is that? I don't know. Provides the opportunity to enhance your physical access controls by. Providing real-time monitoring ser- employee and visitor movements throughout the office building. Creating the position of CISO is one way to satisfy the time-based model of security by reducing the value of R. Which device blocks or admits individual packets by examining information in the TCP/IP headers? Which device blocks or admits individual packets by examining information in TCP/IP headers? Hmm. Let me try again. Hello? Hello? What? Why? Hello? Hi, can you hear me?
Hmm, what the hell? Hello?
Hello? Hmm. Oh! Uh. Click on my icon and check my user volume. Not that. Weird. Which device blocks or admits individual packets by examining information in TCP/IP headers? Blocks and admits individual packets by examining information. Firewall. Type 2. SOC 2 report provides. Hello? Uh, I just want to point out, guys, that. It says my user volume is live, so I don't know what's going on. Type 2 SOC reports provide information about. Hmm. The effectiveness of a cloud's provider's security controls? What is this hat there? How's this Hanson, if you ever. If you see me stuck. Don't. Uh, if I get stuck. Write, type the answer in the general text channel. Which of the following examples of multi-factor authentication, the sixteen pin, a succession pin in a smart card, a password and a cellphone, finger and a USB drive? Employees should be taught how to follow security policies and why those policies exist. Which of the following are indicators that an organization's change management and change control process is effective? Um. And now I'm being. I have no idea, interesting. Why? I don't get it. What's going on? I don't know. Now I can't even hear him. Is it the update? You know what, let me refresh. My interaction was ruined. Why? Refresh your Discord. Uh, time-based model of security dog. Yeah. Thank you. Which component of the time-based model of security does log analysis affect? The log analysis. CM now? Which component secure does log analysis affect, detection? What is the objective of a penetration test? Providing real, no. Uh. To identify where additional procedures protections are most needed to increase time and effort required to compromise a system. Running multiple systems on a single physical machine is referred to as virtualization. Network access controls such as firewalls, IPS and IDS should be employed in both cloud and virtualized systems. Ninety-three percent, where I go wrong? Uh, the effectiveness of a clock provider's information security control, okay. Take a new test. Hmm. Steve is here, well, he will be here soon. Cloud computing can either increase or decrease activity. Decrease security. Depending on how it is implemented. Members of C I R T must have. Uh. Multiple methods of communicating with one another, email, landline, cellphones. AIOT provides the opportunity to enhance physical access controls by. Writing real-time monitoring of employee and visitor movements throughout the office building. Okay. Which of the following are characteristics of a well-designed and effectively functioning change management? Hello? Hello? Why can I not hear him? Can you hear me? He's not even making noise on his end. Hello? Okay, so he can hear me now. Yes. It is his microphone, okay. Can you fix it? I don't know if he can fix it. No, I cannot hear you at all. Is your voice connected? Okay, then I don't know. Well, I'll be speaking out loud. And then if you think I got something wrong, just type it in the chat. Which of the following are characteristics of a well-designed and effectively functioning change management and change control process? Check all that apply. Uh. Characteristics of a well-designed and effectively functioning change. I would assume that. It would be. The fourth one. Development of blackout plans in event of a change creates unexpected problems. Senior management review and approval of major changes, monitoring how change affects aggregation of duties and conversion controls to ensure that data is completely and accurately transferred to new system. One way to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of log analysis is to use. Uh, I think this is called. Continuous, no, no, is it trust services, or what is it? Could be S I E M. Which of the following is the correct sequence of steps in the incident response process? That would be assess threats, select risk response, develop and communicate policy, acquire and implement solutions and monitor performance. Virtualization increases the risk associated with. Unsupervised physical access. According to time-based model of security, one way to increase the effectiveness is to increase P. Right? No. Time-based model of security, one way to increase the effectiveness is to increase P. It is important to update system documentation after a change has been improved. Which of the following are examples of multi-factor authentication? That would be a six-digit PIN in a smart card, a password and a cellphone, fingerprint and a USB device. Trust service principle confidentiality focuses on. Corporate data? Corporate data? What does that mean? Is it a previous one that I missed? Sensitive corporate data, the first one. Oh! Protection of sensitive corporate data from unauthorized disclosure. Length, number of characters is more important than the complexity number of different types of characters in determining the strength of the password. If the time an attacker takes to break through. This is kind of difficult, I will just watch you study a little. I guess. If the time an attacker takes to break through the organization's preventative controls is shorter than the sum of the time required to for the organization to direct the attack and the time required to respond to the attack, the organization's security is considered ineffective. Cloud file sharing services can distribute malware. Fake or decoy system used to provide early warning that attackers are targeting an organization's system is called honeypot. What? Recognize that a problem exists, stop the attack, repair the damages learned from the attack, okay, try again. Which of the following is an example of multi-modular authentication? Um. Paraphrase plus an answer to a security question. I mean a passphrase. Running multiple systems on a single physical machine is referred to as virtualization. Which activity are accounts most likely to participate in? Continuous monitoring. What component of the time-based model of security does log analysis affect? Detection. Trust service framework identifies five principles for systems reliably. Which of one of those five principles is necessary prerequisite to the other four? Security. One way to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of log analysis is to use. S I E M, is this, what is S I E M? Alright, so, S I E M applies to company board, security information and effect management, okay. Wait. Efficiency and effectiveness, security information and effect management? Yeah. Organizations that have a CISO are more likely to have a well-trained C I R T. Network access controls. Hello? I think I just heard something. Weird. Network access controls should be employed both in the cloud and in virtualized systems. A DMZ is a separate network located outside the organization's internal information system. Creating the position of CISO is one way to identify the time-based model of security by reducing the value, no, no, by reducing the value of R? I think so. Find changes in log records is an indication that a system has been compromised. Wait, finding changes in log records. Would that be that a change has been improved? Well, because it's records, so it's already happened. At least it means that it's been pros- uh, compromised. Which of the following is an example of a multi-factor authentication? Multi-factor, so six-digit PIN and smart card, password, cellphone, fingerprint and USB device. Wait, why is this here? Weird. Penetration tests are authorized attacks. Which device blocks or admits individual packets by examining information on the TCP/IP headers? Firewall. Type 2 SOC report provides information about. My apologies. A type 2 SOC 2 report provides information about an organization's internal information system? We just answered this. The effectiveness of a cloud provider information security controls. Ninety-three, again? Hold on, this is wrong. Multi-factor authentication. Hold on, let me edit this. These. Factor. What? Um. Which of the following are examples of multi-factor authentication? That. Is an example. Um. Something went wrong there. Let me fix that. This is probably the least. I mean, at least you can tell these aren't rehearsed, I'm actually doing these live. Wait, which chapter is this? This is chapter eleven. Okay. It's probably here. Okay. So instead of that, it should say the following. Okay, test again. You see, I swear for like a brief moment I can hear him, but then afterwards I can't. The trust service principle piracy, privacy focuses on. Why did that turn off the, whatever? Focuses on. The protection of sensitive corporate data from unauthorized disclosure. The IOT provides the opportunity to enhance physical access controls by providing real-time monitoring of employee and visitor movements throughout the office building. Trust service framework identifies five principles for base for systems reliability. Which one of those five principles is a necessary prerequisite to the other four? Five principles for system reliability, which one of those five principles is a necessary prerequisite to the other four? Security. Change management and change control process needs to be applied to any modifications too. Hardware, operating procedures and software. Which component of the time-based model of security does log analysis affect? Detection. Developed jointly by the AICPA and the CICA. Trust services. Cloud file sharing services can distribute malware. Organizations that have a CISO are more likely to have a well-trained C I R T. Which device blocks or admits individual packets by examining information in the TCP/IP headers? Firewalls. The goal of log analysis is to determine the reasons for events such as a failed login attempt. Finding changes in log records is an indication that a system has been compromised. Employees can be an organization's weakest link in terms of security. Network access controls example firewalls, IPS and IDS should be employed both in cloud and virtualized systems. Employees should be taught how to follow security policies and why those policies exist. A fake or decoy system used to provide early warning that attackers targeting an organization's system is called a honeypot. What? Protection of sensitive corporate. Ensuring that personal information and customers' fine employees is, damn it, need to do it again. It's okay, even if we fail once or twice, we'll get it next time. That's the plan. Let's try this again. Virtualization can increase the risk associated with unsupervised physical access. Changes should be tested in the system in a separate from the one used for daily business processes. Which component of the time-based model of security does log analysis affect? Detection. Good change management and change control results in better operating performed by reducing the number of problems that need to be fixed. Length is more important than complexity in determining the strength of a password or passphrase. Which of the following is a correct sequence of steps in the incident response process? Recognize that a problem exists, stop the attack, repair the damage, learn from the attack. Trust service principle privacy focuses on ensuring that personal information from customer ensuring that personal information from customers, suppliers, and employees is collected, used, disclosed, and maintained no matter this is consistent with organization policies. Which device blocks or admits individual packets by examining information on the TCP and IP headers? Firewalls. Network access controls should be employed both in the cloud and virtualized system. According to the time-based model of security, one way to increase the effectiveness is to increase P. Cloud file sharing services CAD, distribute malware. Which of the following is an example of multi-factor authentication? That would be voice recognition plus answer to security question. A USB device plus a retina scan and a password plus a smart card. CRT should include members of senior management. Which of the following is an example of multi-model authentication? Uh, passphrase plus answer to security question. Time-based model security pauses the security's effective when the following equation is satisfied, P is greater than D plus R. We did it, Hanson. How does it feel? Why does that open? I don't know. Well, that's good. Awesome. Okay, let's do the next question. Whoa. Now we gotta go to the second chapter, chapter twelve. Encryption is reversible but hashing is not. Replacing sensitive personal information with fake data is called data masking. Which statements are not true? Oh no. Uh, privacy is concerned with protecting an indiv- an organization's intellectual property, confidentiality is concerned protecting a customer's personal information. Wait, that might be a true though. Wait a minute, this is actually hard. Hanson, what do you think? I'm gonna go with A. Software that is embedded in documents or files that contain confidential information to indicate who owns the information is called wait. That contain confidential information is called a digital watermark? I think it's called a digital watermark. It could be digital signature too. Oh wow, this one's gonna be hard. Which type of encryption is faster, symmetric? If you want to email a document to a friend, then be assured that only your friend will be able to look in the document, you should encrypt your document using your public key, I believe. Right, is it your public key or is it your friend's private key? I don't even remember. Encryption does not protect information when it is displayed on a monitor or printed in a report. Which of the following factors should be considered when determining the strength of an encryption system? Uh, probably policies for managing the cryptographic keys, key length, and encryption algorithm. Provides assurance that someone cannot enter into a digital transaction, then subsequently deny that they had done, so that's blockchain, right? That's a digital that's a digital signature, right? Hello? What if you plug and unplug your mic? I guess not. I'm gonna go with digital signature. Using your private key to encrypt a hash of a document creates uh, that's a digital watermark. That's crazy, this stuff is, um authority. Hard. Which of the following government regulations mandates that almost every company in the United States must take specific action to protect privacy or face fines for failure to comply? CCPA and GDPR. Which of the following helps protect you from identity theft? Um. Encrypted all email containing personal information, shred all paper documents containing personal information before disposal, and monitor your credit reports regularly. Which of the following can be a secret digital signature? Hmm, an asymmetric encryption system? A nonce is a sequential access number. It confirms the confidentiality of information while it is processing. Okay, what did I mess up? Digital watermarks are embedded into the confidential situation. This is your, your friend's public key. This is a digital signature. And a nonce is a random number, got it. Okay, let's retest. Software that is embedded into a document that contains confidential information to indicate who owns the information is called a digital watermark. If you want to email a document to your friend that can be, and be assured that only your friend will be able to open the document, you should encrypt the document using your friend's public key. A nonce is a random number. And your private key to encrypt the hash of a document creates a digital signature. Cool. Now let's go to test. Which statement is not true, privacy is concerned protecting an organization's intellectual property, confidentiality is a concern with protecting a customer's personal information. A website has a checkbox that states click here if you do not want the Ajax company to share your information with third parties and send you offers that you might be interested in. Is following the choice of the consent and practice known as opt-out. Replacing sensitive personal information with fake data is called data masking. Your private key to encrypt the hash of a document creates a digital certificate. Is this correct, Hanson? Now I don't even think he hears me. Encryption does not protect information when it is displayed on a monitor or printed in a report. If you want to email a document to a friend so that your friend can be certain that the document came to you, you should encrypt the document using your friend's public key. Encryption produces a file similar in size to a plaintext file but hashing produces a short fixed-length file. Symmetric encryption is faster than asymmetric encryption. Encryption is necessary to protect confidentiality and privacy. Which type of encryption is faster? Uh, symmetric. The best place to store your private asymmetric encryption key is your browser, your digital certificate, digital signature, none of these are correct. None of these are correct. That should say none. Which of the following actions must be an organization, must an organization take to preserve the confidentiality of sensitive information? Train employees to properly handle information. Which of the following generally accepted privacy principles addresses the right to be forgotten? Use retention and disposal. Encryption protects the confidentiality of information while it is processing. Blockchain uses uh I think it's a ledger. Could be hashing. It's hashing, okay. Your private key, document came from you, your private key. Digital signature is what you create when you encrypt the hash of a document, got it. Blockchain uses hashing. You want an email, if you want to email a document to a friend so that your friend can be certain that the document came from you, you should encrypt document using your private key. Using your private key to encrypt the hash of a document creates a digital signature. Yay. Take a new test. See, this is called practice, eventually we get better at it. Most websites provide information about what data is being collected, how it is used, and why it will be collected. Exactly, Hanson. So he can't hear me. Good to know. Most websites provide information about what data is being collected, how it will be used, and why it is being collected. Websites provide this information in order to satisfy which GAPP principle? Okay, provide what that is collected, how it'll be used, and why it's collected. I think that is, uh, the GAPP principle called notice. Asymmetric encryption systems use two keys, public and private. Organization that issues public and private keys is called a certificate authority. Which of the following actions can reduce the risk of becoming a victim of identity theft? Immediately becoming a victim of identity theft. Immediately canceled, lost, or stolen credit cards, and then do not place outgoing mail containing checks or personal information in a box for pickup? Well, it seems as both of these could be right. Which of the following can be used to prevent unauthorized changes to completed business transactions? A blockchain. Hey, this isn't fair, all of these are technically right. I guess it could be a ledger, but blockchain is what they use. Software that is embedded in documents or files that contain confidential information to indicate who owns the information is called a what was this, Hanson? Do you remember? Software that is embedded in documents or files that could con- that contain confidential information, there you go, it's a digital signature. Tau. Oh, cause he wrote digital tau. Which of the following government regulation mandates that almost every company in the United States must take specific action to protect privacy or face fines for failure to comply? CCPA and GDPR. The best place to store your private encryption, asymmetric encryption key is, none of these are correct. The GDPR gives people the right to request that organizations delete personal information when they have collected, this is referred to as the right to be forgotten. Which principle most likely relates to this, right? Use retention and disposal. Encryption protects the confidentiality of information while it is processing. Blockchain uses hashing. Asymmetric encryption is faster than a asymmetric encryption. Which of the following actions must an organization take to preserve confidentiality of sensitive information? Train employees to properly handle information. Encryption is reversible but hashing is not. Which of the following generally accepted privacy principles addresses the right to be forgotten? Wait a minute. Use retention and disposal, but didn't I answer that earlier? Again, yeah, that's what I think. Uh. Right to be forgotten. Right to be forgotten. Let's check. Wait, so it was the same answer twice, but it was actually a digital watermark, Hanson. It was a digital watermark. Take a new test. Which of the following government regulations mandates that almost every company in the United States must take specific action to protect privacy or face fines? CCPA, GDPR. Software that protects confidentiality by screening outgoing documents to identify the block transmission of sensitive information is called a firewall. What? It could be data loss prevention or informationized management. Software that protects confidentiality by screening outgoing documents to identify and block transmission for sensitive information is called a web allocation firewall? Uh huh. Encryption is necessary to protect confidentiality and privacy. Provides assurance that someone cannot enter into a digital transaction, then subsequently deny that they had done so, and refuse to fulfill their side of the contract. That would be a digital signature, no, 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 no. It could be digital signature. Uh, provides assurance that someone cannot enter into a digital transaction, and then subsequently deny that they had done so, and refuse to fulfill their side of the contract. I have no idea. Digital signature. Encryption does not protect information when it is displayed on a monitor or printed in a report. Replacing sensitive personal information with fake data is called data masking. There you go, it's a random number. GDPR gives people the right to request that organizations delete personal information, why they have collected, this referred to as the right to be forgotten, GAAP principle of use, retention, and disposal. Encryption is reversible but hashing is not. Which of the following statements is not true? Hello? Hello? Can you hear me? Someone just joined.
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay, perfect. Hanson, uh, say something, can he hear you? Can you hear Hanson?
Uh, I don't hear Hanson, but I hear you.
Okay, I think Hanson's microphone is broken. No one is silencing you, Hanson, except yourself. Buy a new microphone. Which of the following statements is not true? Wait, I can hear you now, what?
Wait, what?
I can hear you.
Wait, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you too. Damn. Must've caught all the thing.
Sold it. I don't know, I don't know what you did, but you made Hanson audible.
Oh.
Okay.
Well, that's fantastic. It's not true.
So, which of these statements is not true?
Um.
No, don't look it up, cause that's cheating, you have to be able to do some off the cuff, off the cuff, just give it a guess.
I'm gonna say either A or D.
Most websites provide information about what data is being collected, how it will be used, and why it is collected. Websites provide this information in order to satisfy which GAAP principle that is noticed. Authorized use of someone's personal information is refers to as identity theft. Remember, try to answer it before one of the other ones do, if you can answer it faster and if someone is questioning it, just explain it. So don't just guess. Encryption produces a file similar in size to a plain text file, but hashing produces a short fixed length file. How do you verify a digital signature, Hanson, you wanna give it a go?
Hmm, how to verify, so it is a display on the monitor or printing a report?
I don't think so. If the hash you obtained by decrypting the digital signature matches the hash you obtained by hashing your copy of the document or file. I think it's A, right?
I think it's A, I haven't studied it all, but if I had to guess.
Okay, which of the following generally accepted privacy principle addresses the right to be forgotten, that is uh, use retention and disposal. Ooh, what did we get wrong? It's a data loss prevention. Software that protects confidentiality by screening outgoing documents to identify the block transmission of sensitive information is called data loss prevention, got it? Taking a test. A website has a checkbox that states click if you do not want the Ajax company to share your information with third parties and send you offers that you might be interested in. The following, is following the choice and constant practice known as? Opt out. Who wants to give this one a go? You know what, B R Blue, answer this one.
Oh, um. He says their personal personal big data is called. Uh, data masking?
Yes. Hanson, you're next.
Okay. So encryption is necessary to protect confidentiality and privacy.
My turn, blockchain uses hashing, go.
Um, is this? Ah, is this identity theft?
Hille, how are you? Hille, can you unmute yourself, please? Well, while we wait for him to unmute himself, cuz clearly he's watching the stream. Uh, Hanson, you're up, answer this question.
Oh, Turkey is a public and private.
Okay. Hello, Hille, please answer this question that you see on screen. I guess he muted himself. Find it, symmetric encryption is faster than. Asymmetric encryption. Who's next? Okay, you know what? It, it might be because we don't talk on Discord, B R Blue, what's your name?
Brian.
You're a Brian, okay.
You're.
I really should put my real name, shouldn't I?
I don't even know how to do that.
Anyways, uh, Brian, go.
Oh, um. Organization that issues public and private keys, I think it's gonna be registration authority or certificate authority. But I have no idea.
Hanson, go.
If you want to email a document to a friend, you have to show that only you, your friend will be able to open the document, you should encrypt the documents using. My, your public key.
Your public key, is that what you said?
Yes, your public key.
Okay, Hille, answer this one.
Announce is a. Announce.
Look, Hille, don't be afraid of getting it wrong, if you get it wrong, we'll just do it again.
Yeah. I don't have any idea, maybe data making?
It's a random number. Encryption protects the confidentiality of information while it is in processing. Brian, go.
Uh, hashing is not?
Hashing?
Yeah, I don't know.
Hashing.
Oh, hashing, yeah, might be.
Hanson, go.
Which statement is not true, hmm? Again, international, oh, confident, person, oh, I think it's the second one, confidentiality.
Hille, go.
Which after following gap addresses the right to be forgotten? To take disposal, which is some concerned information, communication, knowledge. Is it A, use retention and disposal?
Which of the following actions can reduce the risk of becoming a victim of identity theft? Immediately cancel any lost or stolen credit cards, do not place outgoing mail containing checks or personal information in your mailbox or pickup. We got two wrong, number nine, your friend's public key.
Not a fantasy.
And then while it is in storage, got it?
What you guys did till now?
What'd he say?
What you guys did, like till now?
We did chapter eleven earlier, we're just on chapter twelve right now. We'll go back to eleven, don't worry.
Alrighty.
So I'll start, using your private key to encrypt the hash of a document creates a. Digital certificate. Brian. Brian?
Oh, me?
Yeah.
Uh, which of the following statements is not true? Uh, A?
Why?
Policies for managing the cryptographic keys, key length, encryption algorithm.
How is that not a true statement?
I have no idea.
It's D.
It's D?
Yeah.
Which of the following actions smart organization take to preserve the confidentiality of sensitive information? Train the employee to properly handle information.
Hille, go.
Yep. So, credit protects confidentiality by screening outgoing documents to identify block transmission of sensitive information. Is called. Data loss prevention?
Asymmetric encryption systems use. Two keys, public and private.
Brian.
Brian?
Uh, hashing.
Hanson?
Hmm. For the crypto digital signature, you need to use. The public key of a person who created the signature.
And.
Who is it?
It's Hille.
Reversible, encryption is reversible, but. Hashing is not?
The organization that issues public and private keys is called a certificate authority. Ryan?
Yeah, um. Your private key.
None of these are correct. Hanson.
Mo- most websites provide information about what data is being connected, how it will be used and. Why it is being connected, websites provide this information in order to satisfy which G A P P principle notice.
It should be G double A P.
What?
Say notice.
Which type of encryption is faster? Public transport multi cousin. Hmm, symmetric?
Provides assurance that someone cannot enter into a digital transaction then subsequently deny that they had done so and refuse to fulfill their side of the contract. That would be. The digital. Digital watermark? Or is that a digital? Ha. I think it's a. Digital watermark, anyone have anything to say against that?
I think it could be a digital certificate.
Okay. Brian? Oh, he muted himself, interesting. Hanson, go.
Hmm, which of the following can be used to prevent unauthorized changes to completely business transactions? Hmm, blockchain.
Hille.
If you want to email a document to a friend so that your friend can be certain that the document came from you. You should encrypt the document using. Your pro. Your public, your private key.
Digital signature.
Ah, this one is so annoying.
Using your private key to encrypt a hash of a document creates a digital signature. And then this is a digital signature?
Oh.
Hmm.
So both are digital signature, got it?
Yep.
Go again. If you want to email a document to your friend so your friend can be certain the document came from you, you should encrypt the document using your private key. Hanson.
Well, we, so. Using your public key to encrypt the hash of a document creates a. Digital. Hmm. Digital watermark.
Why is it a watermark?
Yeah, it's a private stuff, so. Okay, so it's a digital certificate, oh yeah, that belongs to me only as well.
Hille.
Which after following actions can be reduced, can reduce the risk of becoming a victim of identity theft? I think it's B, encrypt all the email.
What about D, I'm asking, cuz I, I want you to ans- I want you to answer me.
Immediately cancel when you lost or stolen credit. Do not place outgoing mail containing checks or personal information in your mailbox.
Cuz I think it's B, but I wanna know why.
You wanted to know it, why it's B?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, yes, so, identity theft, like. You know, if, if it is encrypted, then basically the other person would not know.
Okay.
That's like, I just guessed, guessed from that one.
Encryption is necessary to protect confidentiality and privacy, Hanson.
Uh, encryption protects confidentiality of information while it is in. In storage. Hmm, wait, wait, hold on, if. Protects confidentiality of information, confidentiality of information, what is in processing?
Really?
Oh, in processing, yeah.
Asymmetric, Hille, go.
Yeah, asymmetric encryption system use. Of, protect private hashing cookies asymmetric. Your private key, oh, I guess, ah, your priority.
Hint.
The stands are different.
Two keys.
Two keys, so.
So did Brian just leave, just straight up, okay? Which of the following can be used to create a digital signature? Um, an asymmetric encryption system.
Announce is a random number.
Software that protects confidentiality by screening outgoing documents to identify and block transmission of. Positive, positive information is called. Data loss prevention.
Which statements are not true? Privacy is concerned with protecting an organization's intellectual property and confidentiality is concerned with protecting a customer's personal information.
Which of the following is not true? Encryption protects the confidentiality of information while it is in processing.
Which makes me question something. If we go back up. Why?
Shit.
Alright.
Yeah.
Which after following can be used to prevent unauthorized changes to completed business transaction, blockchain?
The unauthorized use of someone's personal information is referred to as identity theft.
Our website has a checkbox that states, check here if you're the one Ajax company to share information and stuff. Is the following or up out? The first one.
Want to email a document to, oh, uh, Hille, I'm having.
Yeah, if you want to email a document to a friend, to be assured that only your friend, the answer is your private key.
Wow, we're doing terrible. Uh, creates a digital signature. Immediately cancel, yeah, I was wondering why it was not D.
Oh.
Your friend's public key. A public key. Only your friend will be able to open document, wouldn't you encrypt it, oh, your friend's public key, right, right, okay. Let's, let's go again. Oh, right. Hanson, go.
The creates a digital signature.
If you want to email a doc- okay, the friend's public key.
Good, now let's do this again for real. How do you verify a digital signature? If the hash you obtained by decrypting the digital signature matches the hash you obtained by hashing your copy of the document file.
Yes. Using your public key to encrypt the hash of a document creates a. Uh, digital. Certificate.
I think it's signature.
Signature, we just answered this question.
Impossible, uh, then, yeah, I.
Encryption protects the confidentiality of information while it is in storage.
The best place to store your private asymmetric encryption key is, none of these are correct.
Which of the following factors should be considered when determining the strength of a. And any encryption system? Policies for managing the cryptographic keys, keyness encryption argue algorithm.
Which after following has protect you from hiding. Which of the following has protect you from identity theft? Immediately cancel any lost or stolen credit cards. Do not place outgoing mail containing checks or personal information in your mailbox.
Hmm I don't think so. I think it's D.
No, I think it's A.
I think it's D. Which of the following statements is not true? Encryption protects the confidentiality of information while it is in processing. Go Hanson.
A symmetry encryption is faster than asymmetric encryption.
If you want to email a document to a friend, sure that friend can be certain the friend document came from you, you should encrypt using. Your private key.
Which statements are not true? Privacy is concerned with protecting an organization's intellectual property and confidentiality is concerned with protecting a customer's personal information.
Encrypted is necessary to protect confidentiality and privacy.
My turn?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay, which of the following can be used to prevent unauthorized changes to complete a business transaction? Unauthorization uses blockchain.
Encryption produces a file size a file similar in size to a plain text file, but hashing produces a short fixed length file.
So the crypto digital signature you need to use. The. Public key of a person who created a signature.
Encryption protects the confidentiality of information. Is it is in storage. Yeah, it's in storage.
Read that again.
Encryption protects the confidentiality of information. When it is in storage, right?
While it is in processing. See?
Yes.
Oh yeah, good, good, good.
Now let's do the next chapter cause we finally got a hundred.
Yes.
Chapter fourteen. Oh wow, I haven't even fix the settings on this one. Okay factoring accounts receivable is one way to address the threat of. Uh wait wait factoring accounts receivable is one way to address the threat of. Cash flow problems due to past due accounts.
This control procedure is designed to minimize the threat of posting errors throughout account receivable. Minimize the threat of posting errors to account receivables in. Restricting access to master data encryption of customer information while in storage.
Which of the following are threats in the sales or entry process? The test of cash, cash flow problems, like account receivability, aging, credit limit, stock call. Incomplete loss of customers, qualified customers, credit worthiness. Okay, so it's definitely A. And. I think it's B and A and B.
A and B?
Yeah.
You can only pick one.
No. I guess B.
Which control would help reduce the threat of theft of cash? I'm gonna go with lockbox arrangements.
Down with the should be down with the customer. Which of following should be done when the customer places an order? Need to verify the customer's creditworthiness and check inventory availability.
Identify all the controls that mitigate the threat of shipping errors. Data entry failure, bill of letting packing slip. I think it's D, bill of letting and packing slip.
Control procedure for restricting access to pricing master data is designed to mitigate the threat of. The fail uh. Billing errors?
We'll need to bill customers.
Oh, you think it's ability to customers? Okay. Go ahead.
Then you have all the controls that mitigate the threat of theft of inventory.
Brian, do you have any advice?
I feel like none of these. Handle and deposit customer payments. Medicate the threat of. It must be the longest one here, the period out the physical accounts of inventory reconciliation. Recollect the quantities. The first one.
You think it's personal? Okay, go Hilay.
To minimize the risk of theft of consumer remittances, the person who handles and. Deposits customer payments are also can also be okay lines. Think it's I am confused between A and C, but let's go with A.
Which of the following is helpful in reducing the risk of customers failing to pay for their purchases? I'm gonna go with E F T electric lockbox and Feddy.
Which does does a use of R F I D and barcode address? Bill of letting packing slip.
A legal contractor defines responsibility for goods while they are in transit is. Bill of letting.
Which of the following is a threat to the shipping process? Picking the wrong items and theft of inventory.
Um yeah. Identify all the controls that mitigate the threat for picking the wrong items or the wrong quantity shop and add them. Identify all the controls. I think. Reconciliation of picking this to sales order details, protocols and R F I D technology.
Which of the following controls are designed to minimize the risk of inaccurate or invalid master?
What do you think?
A accounts receivable aging process, yeah.
Oh Brian, you unmuted yourself. Can you hear us?
Yeah, sorry. I was just like all around a lot of noise, but I was still watching the.
Bro, we fucked up.
We got fucked.
Which control procedures designed to minimize the threat of posting errors uh mailing monthly statements to customers? Data entry controls barcode R F I D technology. The failure of his billing. I was right, Hanson. I was right.
Building errors, building errors, oh minimize.
Minimize the risk of theft to customer remittance to the person who handles and deposits card payment can also none of these are correct. None of these are correct. Account res- receive okay, this one I was wrong. This was me. Accounts receivable aging report credit limits.
If you are wrong, then number fifteen is also wrong.
No, Hilay, you were fifteen. Okay, so we're gonna go we're gonna do this again, but the order will be myself, then Brian, then Hanson, then Hilay. Which of the following controls are designed to minimize the risk of inaccurate or invalid master data? Utilizing the processing integrity controls discussed in chapter thirteen. Use access controls to which employee can access master data and review all changes to master data. Brian!
It's me, okay. Four.
Hanson. Hanson.
Hmm identify all the controls that mitigate the threat of shipping errors. Minimize the threat of shipping errors. And so. Picking the wrong item instead of inventory.
Nope.
Ah shit, data entry edit controls, buffers. Needing I just mitigate the threat of shipping errors.
Hilay.
Which address does the use of R F I D and barcode address? Pre picking the wrong items and theft of.
The control procedure for restricting access to pricing master data is designated is designed to mitigate the threat of. Billing errors. Okay, you know what? Brian, just for a rule of thumb, after I answer, it goes to you.
Okay. Uh. One? Fuck.
Hanson.
Which control procedure is designed to mitigate measures for posting errors in account receivable? For mailing of monthly statements for customers. Yeah, oh.
Wait, really?
Yes.
Okay.
Identify all the controls that mitigate the threat of shipping errors. In data and create controls, barcode and R F I D technology.
Okay. Now let's actually do a test. Which of the following controls is the best way to reduce the threat of loss destruction of revenue cycle data? Backup and disaster recovery procedures.
Is it? A bill of letting pack and slip?
Just some advice, if you actually read the question out loud, your brain will begin to associate an answer.
Which of the following processes involve having customers and payments directly to the organization's bank? Um send payments directly directly. Or E F T and electronic lockbox.
The control procedure for separating the duties of bill bill and shipping functions is designed to mitigate. The threat of.
To minimize the risk of the theft of cash, the person who handles customer payments should not have the duties of. Reconciling bank account, posting remnants to customer accounts, crediting or authorizing credit memos.
These are the following controls should be used to mitigate the threat of uncollectible account. Um. Threat of uncollectible account. Credit limits?
Identify all the controls that mitigate the threat of theft of inventory. Oh this again, let's see. Um. All communicate the threat of. I say the first one periodic physical accounts of inventory. And reconciliation to record the quantities. The first one.
Which of the following controls are designed to minimize the risk of inaccurate or invalid master data? I think it's fast utilize the process integrity. Use access control and review all changes.
Which of the following is helpful in reducing the risk of customers failing to pay for their purchases? Accounts receivable aging report and credit limits. Right?
Which of the following is used to change a customer's accounts receivable balance um? Sales. Order?
Which of following addressing the cash connectable process, cash connections process. Set of cash and cash flow problems.
A legal contractor defines responsibility for goods while they are in transit is called. Oh. Letter of credit or bill of letting. I think it's bill of letting.
Which control would help reduce the threat of cash flow problems? Lockbox agree arrangements.
Which approach to maintaining accounts receivable is more likely to be used for business-to-business transactions? Than for business-to-consumer transactions? Hmm I have no idea, but I'm gonna go with accounts receivable aging method.
Which document authorizes reducing the balance owed by a customer? A credit memo, I suppose. Oh yeah.
We didn't do that badly.
Open invoice method.
Oh.
Which approach to maintaining accounts receivable is most likely to be used by the business-to-business transaction and for business-to-customer transaction, open invoice method? Which of the following is used to change a customer's account receivable balance? Sales invoice. The control procedure for separating the duties of the billing and shipping functions is designed to mitigate the threat of the failure to bill customers. Okay. Go again. The control procedure for separating the duties of the billing and shipping functions is designed to mitigate the threat of. The failure to bill customers.
Oh, which of the following is used to change a customer's accounts receivable balance? Sales order.
Sales invoice.
Which of all I think it's sales invoice, right?
That's not an answer here.
Okay, here is a open open voice method.
Okay. Okay.
Hey, I'm sorry y'all, but I have to dip.
Go for it.
Gotta go see about a girl.
Oh damn.
Okay.
Your dog, hey hey.
I'm looking for a wife.
Good, congratulations.
Hopefully.
You ever decided to look out of country?
What? You said what?
Have you ever decided to look outside of the country?
For a wife?
Yeah.
Hmm, no, I haven't. I can't do that long distance.
Not long distance. Either bring him to States or go over there, you ever consider that?
Oh, yeah dude, when I go to Mexico, I like drop my passport on accident, you know? See who's looking.
Not like that.
Alright though y'all.
Okay, jokes aside, have a good night.
Good night.
Alright, good night.
Alright, so it's just us three now. Hanson, that was funny. Anyways, back to work. Hanson, answer this question.
Hmm, what's this one again, but places and order, EFT, that's, no, not that. To be done when the customer places an order. Verify the customer's credit worthiness, check inventory availability.
Which of the following controls are designed to minimize the risk of inaccurate or invalid master data? Utilize the processing, use access control and review all changes to master data.
The general revenue cycle thread does encryption address. Wait, which general revenue cycle thread does encryption address?
Which general revenue cycle thread does regular preparation for managerial reports most directly address? Hmm, inaccurate master data. Oh shit, poor performance. Poor performance.
Which of the following controls is the best way to reduce the threat of loss or destruction of revenue cycle? Think it's free backup and disaster recovery procedure.
Which document is used to record the items and quantities ordered by a customer? Sales order.
Which of the following is helpful in reducing the risk of customers failing to pay for their purchases? The accounts receivable aging report and credit limits.
Which general revenue cycle thread does regular, it's poor performance?
Poor performance.
Which document is used to authorize the release of inventory from the warehouse? Packing slip? It's parking, picking ticket, really, okay, picking ticket.
Which of the following are addressing the sales order entry process? Sales order entry process. For stock out incomplete or inaccurate orders, loss of customers.
Requiring the use of digital signatures on an electronic order by customer is a control that is designed to reduce the risk of shipping error. Yeah, shipping errors.
Okay. Now let's go back to the actual test. Requiring the use of digital signatures on an electronic order by a customer is the control that is designed to reduce the risk of which threat invalid orders?
A legal contract that defines responsibility for goods while they are in transit is called legal contract that defines responsibility. Uh, bill of lading.
Which general revenue cycle thread does encryption address? Unauthorized disclosure of sensitive information.
Which of the following controls is the best way to reduce the threat of loss or destruction of revenue cycle data? Backup and disaster recovery procedures.
Which documents are often sent to the customer along with the merchandise's order? Picking ticket, oh no, 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 it's a bill of lading and packing slip.
Which control could help reduce the threat of cash flow? Cash flow budgets?
Which approach to maintaining accounts receivable is more likely to be used for business-to-business transaction than for business-to-consumer transaction? Open invoice method.
To minimize the risk of the set of cash, the person who handles customer payments should also have the duties of Hmm, reconciling the bank account, posting remittance to customer accounts, creating or authorizing credit memos.
Which document is used to record the items and quantities ordered by customer? Fail invoice, fail order, fail order.
Factoring accounts receivable is one way to address the threats of
What are you listening?
What do you mean? Did you say something, Hilei?
Oh, huh, Hanson, what is you listening?
Factoring accounts receivable is one way to address the threat of failure to bill customers? It could be cash flow problems due to the past due accounts. Hanson, go.
Identify all the controls that mitigate the threat of set of inventory, periodic physical accounts of inventory or reconciliation to reported quantities. Documentation of all inventory transfers. Restriction of physical access to inventory, restrict to, restrict the ability to cancel sales. Bar code and RFID technology.
Which of the following controls are designed to minimize the risk of inaccuracy? Uh. They utilize the processing integrity, master data, master data.
Which control would help reduce the threat of theft of cash? Lockbox arrangements.
Which of the following are addressed with the shipping process, picking the wrong item and set of inventory?
Hilei?
Oh, sorry. Which of the following control could be used to mitigate the threat of uncollectible accounts? Uh. Oh, credit limits.
Picking wrong items.
I'll see you guys tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll see you at nine tomorrow.
Bye bye.
Wait, tomorrow?
Yeah, we're gonna do this again tomorrow, Hanson.
I will be a little bit late for that.
That's fine, I'll go solo for like an hour, that's fine. Which control would help reduce the threat of cash flow? Lockbox arrangements, okay? Six was Hilei. Eight is Hanson. To minimize the risk of theft of cash, the person who handles customer payments should not have the duties yet. Oh, Hanson was right. Uh, which of the following is dirty shipping process? This one. Um, before we continue to the next one, I just need to use the rushing real quickly, okay, Hanson? I'm back, let's do this again, okay?
Alright, okay.
To minimize the risk of the theft of cash, the person who handles consumer payments should not also have the duties of reconciling bank account, posting remittance to customer accounts, creating or authorizing credit memos.
Which of the following is addressed with the shipping process? Shipping process, okay, shipping process, picking the wrong item or the wrong quantity.
Which control would help reduce the threat of cash flow problems? Lockbox arrangements. Awesome. Hi, Hilei.
He was back on.
He's back, cool.
Man, what's up?
Okay, time to take a new test. Can you hear us, Hilei? Which document is used to record the items and quantities recorded by the customer, ordered by the customer, that would be the sales order.
Okay, which of the following control is the best way to reduce a threat of loss or destruction of running your cycle data? May reduce a threat of loss or destruction? Back on disaster recovery procedures.
Hilei, you wanna go? I think Hilei knows he's muted, I'll, I'll just answer after Hanson then. Which of the following is used to change a customer's account receivable balance? Um. Which of the following is used to change a customer's account receivable balance? Credit memo?
To minimize the risk of the set of cash, the person who handles customer should also have the uh, duty, had the duties of for reconciliation of the bank account, posting remittance to customer accounts, creating or authorizing credit memos.
What is financial electronic data interchange? It is a combination of EFT and EDI that enables both remains data and fund transfer instructions to be included in one electronic package.
Which control will help reduce a threat of, threat of cash? Cash flow budget, budgets.
Why?
Reduce a threat of a set of cash. A set of cash. Or lockbox arrangement.
Identify all the controls that mitigate the threat of shipping errors. That are entry edit controls and barcode and RFT technology?
Hmm, so the shipping errors.
That's inventory, so it would be a bill of lading and packing slip, right?
Yes, packing slip. A control procedure for restricting access for pricing master data is designed to mitigate the threat of um. Building errors.
The control procedure for separating the duties of the billing and shipping function is designed to mitigate the threat of
They are two different ones.
Separate the duties of billing and shipping? Oh, um. Huh.
It's either the failure to bill customers or building errors. Pricing master data.
Failure to bill customers.
The customers, yeah, they're two different ones. A legal contractor defines responsibility for goods while they are in transit is called uh. Bill of lading.
Which approach to maintaining accounts receivable is more likely to be used by business-to-business transactions and for customer, the business-to-customer transaction? Open invoice method.
Open invoice method. Which documents are often sent to the customer along with the merchandise nurse's order, merchandise order? Sent to them. Uh, bill of lading and packing slip.
Identify all the controls that mitigate the threat of picking the wrong items, the wrong quantity of an item. I think it would be reconciliation of picking list to sales order details and barcode and RFT technology. Hanson?
Hmm. Which of the following are threats in the cash connections process? Cash connection process. Um, yeah, set of cash, cash flow problems.
Which of the following are threats in the sales order entry process?
That's for the entry process. Entry process.
Oh, stockouts, incomplete or inaccurate orders, loss of customers. Okay, this was me.
Minimize the threat of shipping errors. Edit controls.
This one is also me. Sales invoice, okay. Let's go again. Which of the following is helpful in reducing the risk of customers failing to pay for their purchases? Account receivable age report, credit limits.
Which document authorizes reducing the balance owed by a customer? Reduce the balance owed by a customer is a reducing credit memo.
Which document is used to record the items and quantities ordered by a customer, sales order?
The control procedure for merely monthly statements, companies designed to mitigate the threat of uh posting errors in our country's table.
Really?
Posting errors in our country's table.
A legal contract that defines responsibility for goods while they are in transit is called a bill of lading.
Identify all the controls that mitigate the threat of picking the wrong items or the wrong quantity of an app.
What do you think, Hanson?
As a reconciliation of picking this to sales order details, barcode and RFID technology.
Which control procedure is designed to minimize the threat of posting errors to accounts receivable? I think it would be
Many monthly statement, oh yeah, posting errors to accounts receivable, so remove monthly check to make sure that it doesn't happen. Which general revenue cycle threat does regular preparation for managerial reports mostly directly address? All the poor performance.
Which of the following controls are designed to minimize the risk of inaccurate or invalid master data? Uh, in other words, it would be review all changes to master data, use access control to restrict which employees can restrict access master data, and utilize processing integrity controls discussed in chapter thirteen.
Recurring the user digital signature on the electronic order by a customer is a control that is designed to reduce the risk of which, which set? The user digital signature on a customer is control designed to reduce the risk of well, invalid orders.
Which of the following processes involve having customers send payments directly to an organization's bank? Which of the following processes, so it's plural, EFT, electronic lockbox F E D I.
Aftering accounts, receivable is a wrong way to address the threat of is a wrong way to address the threat of
Okay, let's go.
Cash flow problems, uh cash flow problems are due to past due accounts.
What is financial electronic data interchange? It is a combination of EFT and EDI that enables both remains data and funds transfer instructions to be included in one electronic package.
Which control will help reduce the threat of cash? Cash flow problems. Um, lockbox arrangement.
Which approach to maintaining accounts receivable is more likely to be used by business to business transaction than for business to consumer? Open invoice method. We did it, Hanson!
Yes, we made it.
Alright!
Really hard.
Chapter fifteen.
Oh yeah, I think there's one more and I'll call you alive for me.
You know what, I think that for tomorrow, we should start at, at seven.
Seven PM?
Yeah. PM.
I cannot do seven PM.
Relax. We start at seven PM and we'll go until eleven PM.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
In that way, everyone has time to show up.
That's cool though.
Which of the following threats are data processing integrity controls designed to reduce? X, uh, I would say data processing integrity controls, I think it would be errors in supplier invoice.
The control procedure for accounting competitive for bidding is primarily designed to mitigate the risk of purchasing at inflated prices.
Which document is sent to supplier when an organization wants to buy something? Uh, a purchase requisition.
Uh, order for the process of ordering inventory can be initiated by communication form. Initiated by communication form. Document the quantity received and the quality of items received.
Which of the following is the proper sequence of activities for transactions when an organization acquires inventory of raw materials? That would be order, receive, pay.
And a post to inventory management that seeks to reduce required inventory levels by improving the accuracy of forecasting techniques to better schedule processes to satisfy production needs is called materials requirement plan, plan.
Supplier invoices are sent to which function? I'm gonna go with approved supplier invoices.
Identify all the controls that mitigate the threat of mistakes when counting delivery from suppliers. Content, what, delivery, so. Or law informing receiving employees about the quantities ordered, requiring receiving employees to send a receiving report, use of baccals and RFID tags.
Which of the following controls could be used to mitigate the threat of accepting unordered items? Um, supplier invoice receiving report purchase order. Wait, requiring the existence of approved purchase orders before accepting any delivery.
The source of for back orders for inventory is, items is for inventory items is revenue cycle.
Which of the following purposes does a receiving report fulfill? Uh, it would be document the quantity received, document the quality of items received.
This document is sent to suppliers in order to acquire inventory. In order to acquire inventory. Supplier invoice.
Evaluated receipt settlement reduces the threat of I'm gonna go with errors in supplier invoices.
A method for processing accounts payable in which each of total invoices posted for individual suppliers records in the accounts payable file and it's then stored in open invoice is called evaluated receipt settlement system.
Controlled procedure of supplier audits is designed to mitigate the risk of skimming? No, we, we were way off. Kickbacks.
Kickbacks, oh, kickbacks, this is bad, yeah, they get money for themselves.
It's called a non-voucher system? Uh, purchase order.
Oh, it's purchase order, oh, I send them, so they
Inventory controller, production cycle, revenue cycle. A purchase order. And mistakes in posting to accounts payable, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, we start earlier tomorrow, that will be get more studying in and then, um, between the hours of three thirty to six fifty, I'm gonna be doing individual study, what are you gonna do?
Oh, for me, I have a meeting I have to attend from, five thirty to eight thirty, so yeah.
Understood, have a nice evening.
Yeah, thank you. Good night.
Good night. Just, oh my goodness, oh my goodness, this is, um this exam is certainly going to be a lot harder than the previous one, I can already tell. There's already so many more terms this time around that we gotta know. I get it, there's more questions on the exam, but come on, this is, this is stupid. You know what, let's do this one. I'll do this one solo. Options. Answer with definition. How does the development of the Internet of Things affect privacy? Okay. The Internet of Things. How does it affect privacy? It increases data collection, devices collect vast amount of data about individuals, including their location, habits and activities. Data can be used to track individuals, build profiles on them and target them with advertising. Insecure devices, many IoT devices are not designed with security in mind, this makes them vulnerable to hacking and data breaches. And the lack of transparency, many companies do not disclose how they collect, use and share data collected from the IoT devices. This makes it difficult for individuals to understand how their privacy is being impacted. Which preventative detective and corrective controls would mitigate the following threats? An employee's laptop was stolen at the airport, the laptop contained personally identified information about the company's or customers, that could potentially be used to commit identity theft. Okay, so, in this case the preventative detective or corrective. True, the laptop should be encrypted to prevent further unauthorized access to the data they contain. Detective, uh, employees should be required to report lost or stolen laptops immediately. And corrective, the company should have a plan to recover the data from the lost or stolen laptop. What are the basic activities of the revenue cycle? Discuss the common threats to the business cycle, provide examples of internal controls that would address these threats, okay? The revenue cycle. Jesus Christ, I'm getting message already. I don't know. What are the basic activities of the revenue cycle? Discuss two common threats to the business cycle, provide examples of internal controls that would address these threats. Okay, two common activities of the business cycle. Of the revenue cycle. Order processing, billing and collections. Payment, I think it's gonna be D. Which preventative detect, oh, I should actually read D. Uh, includes activities such as order processing, billing and collections, common threats, employees can commit fraud by falsifying sales order, billing customers for goods and services that were not provided, or altering customer records to increase sales commissions. Data loss would be sensitive data such as customer credit card numbers may not be lost or stolen if laptops or other devices are not properly secured. Job control segregation duty, different employees should be responsible for different tasks such as order processing, billing, collections, help separate, prevent fraud by ensuring that no one has access to complete control over transaction. Flawed should only have access to the data they need to do their jobs, helps to prevent data loss by ensuring that only authorized individuals can access sensitive data. Backup should be made in case of loss of data. At the same time, revenue cycle. I actually think it's A. Because vendor fraud exists and payment errors for the revenue cycle. Okay, mitigate the following threats, company programming staff request some code for the shopping cart feature on the website, code contain a buffer overflow vulnerabilities could be exploited in the customer. Okay, so be preventative, detective and corrective. Company should have process reviewing or improve all custom code before it is deployed, detective, the company should have a vulnerability scanning program in place to detect this fix. Secure vulnerabilities as well location, corrective, company should have a platform responding to security incidents such as overflow vulnerability. What are the basic activities of the expenditure cycle? Discuss two common threats to this business cycle, provide examples of internal controls that would address these threats. Basically, it's the expenditure cycle. Well, that would be, um oh, no, so this actually would be the purchase requisition order and the other one would be the opposite, okay? So the revenue cycle would be D like I originally stated. Yeah, okay, hundred percent. Alright, good night, guys.